Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on behalf of the Pataro subdivision? Okay, seeing there's none, the applicant is asked to adjourn this public hearing to January the 18th, 2023. So entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to that date.
Move.
Okay, so move, second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Children's Enrichment Project LLC. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So I'll move.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Is there a, there a microphone up there? All right. Yeah, can you hear me? Is it on? Okay. All right. Here tonight for a public hearing for Children's Enrichment. This is an existing site that formerly served as a commercial furniture store. It has an existing caretaker's apartment on it and existing wood frame barn toward the rear. What the applicant would like to do is convert this via change of use for a club activity. They have a group of families that are in their organization. It would be a private membership club that would be onsite and be limited to just their family members, no outside or public involvement into the site. Hours of operation typically during the day, nine to five, maybe sometimes on the weekends. As far as site modifications that we would be making to the parcel, we're to move the existing commercial entrance sign. It won't have any commercial aspect, but, and then restriping or redelineating the parking area that's in front of the existing barn. We have valet-style parking. We have an update from our last meeting. We changed the location of the handicap space. We're going to have that directly opposite the entrance to the side of the main building. So now we have basically 14 valet parking spots in front of the barn. We'll have the one handicap access directly adjacent from the former furniture store. And looking at the ADA requirements, we're going to have a hardened surface in that ADA parking space that would lead to the, an ADA compliant wooden ramp that would lead up to the side entrance of the building. Last we spoke, we had hearing sanitation had on site and we had them uncovering a septic tank. It was a good working order. We had it come clean. And we discovered laterals behind the building that serve the caretaker's apartment and the existing building. We found three laterals, estimated about 50 feet. Speaking to the health department, we've run across our water usage for the site based upon the use that we're proposing. We're going to have to be on the septic side, adding a couple more laterals plus the third area, just to prevent the area from fails. We've actually been onsite and we've done soil tests with the health department, both deep tests and per tests. We're in a design phase and finalizing the design for that septic system improvement. That is in the process, but based upon our, our interaction with the health department and the water usage that we've discussed with them, they seem acceptable to our design and our improvement to the system. Other than that, we do show a landscape burn in front of the, in front of the building itself. Push the burn back slightly. We showed the intersection visibility triangles. We've also shot site distance. At the last meeting, we talked about the actual DOT, even though we're not modifying the entrance in any way, we're just assuming that it is. We did send correspondence after the permanent engineer to have them take a look. We haven't received any word back from the DOT yet, but since we're not requesting a permit from them or modifying the entrance in any way within our right of way, I don't expect there to be an issue. I will, I know it was low with the DOT right now, but as soon as we have the orders, we'll call it back to the board.
Anything else?
Just pull the mic up a little bit, yeah, just signaling me in the back, yeah.
All right, just I'll close it and I'll open it up to the board. Yeah, anybody have, any board members have any questions regarding, regarding the current presentation? No, all right, let's, see if we get, well, one thing we need to do is, I think we still have, we still have to talk about the parking issue. I know that there's still some issues with the calculations and how we come about, you know, the number, the actual number of parking spaces, you know, and the valet parking issue because it's a, it's a difficult, that's a difficult standard to use. But, yeah, leave, I'll turn it over to the planner to discuss that a little further.
So, going through it by item, I guess the, the first question is how you're coming, you propose 11 spaces, or you say your requirement is 11 spaces, you're proposing 15. It's, it's not clear to me what use under 24097 you're using to get to 11 or why you're proposing in excess of that number?
I think we, at the last meeting, we discussed based upon the amount of memberships that they have and how, how the families arrive together. We came up with 11 spaces and then through talking with the board, they thought if you needed any additional spaces to show them, if you want them, so maybe during an event, during the weekend, there could be one or two extra spaces that you'd be needing. That's kind of how we arrived at that, at that greater threshold.
What I, what I think would be a, a better idea, the last time that we had someone come apply for this particular special permit, we used place of assembly as their parking calculation. That's one space for every hundred square feet of gross floor area that's dedicated to the purposes of, of public assembly. So I think what would make more sense is to, is to arrive at a number based on that using your floor plans, show what areas you're dedicating to public assembly, have those parking calculations on the plan, and then if you want a waiver to, to either reduce or even increase that number, then, you know, have a, a separate memo that says, you know, this is our justification for why we would like a waiver from that parking requirement. But I think it makes more sense to start with that number and then we'll just, we'll see where you're at in relation to that. There's also the issue of the, the caretaker's residence. It wasn't clear, I, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that the caretakers is included in those 14 spaces that are in the valet scheme. I think programmatically, you know, and, and nobody likes to think about this, but for future, for potential resale, I, I think it makes a lot more sense to have the spaces dedicated into the caretaker's residence not impeded by any potential valet scheme. So that those spaces are for the caretaker's residence, independent of whatever other uses are on this property. And the caretaker's residence would need two spaces as per 247, 24097. And then finally, it's the, it's the, the variation from 24096, which is your dimensional requirements, and that's where we get into the, the valet scheme because there really isn't any precedent for anything like that in the town. There's nothing in the code that describes valet parking or how that would work or what the requirements for it would be or to what degree you would be able to deviate from the regs. So, given the limited information we have about your peak hours, you know, there's no, there's no traffic study, there's no parking study, the board is very hesitant to grant a waiver from 24096 for a valet scheme when nothing like that exists in the town. So, you know, I would, I would obviously prefer to see a parking scheme that does not rely on a stacked plan or a valet system. And if, if we can't reach, if we can't find that and you do want to pursue, you know, a valet system, I think, I think the board would want to see a parking study to verify that that would work or how that would work or, or when it would be in use. So that's, that's parking. I don't, I'm, I'm hoping that we don't need to go the route of a parking study. I'm hoping that we can find parking scheme that doesn't rely on valet, but the, the board is very hesitant about pursuing a valet scheme for parking. And then the other issue is, is zoning, the, the special permit that you're applying for, 24062, that's private community and fraternal recreational clubs. The, the buildings on the site are pre-existing and so the setback requirements of that special permit, you are exempt from, but what you're not exempt from is the minimum lot area requirement for that special permit. So the, the project, the application would need a, a variance for that. Now, it gets a little bit more complicated. We're talking about the farm animal use element of this. There are provisions in the code for having small farm animals on residential properties, but this site is zoned hamlet mixed use, which is not considered a residential zone, it's considered a commercial zone. And the, the farm use in the commercial zone is, is sort of your standard farm operation special permit. So you would also need to apply for that. I don't, glancing at it, I, I don't think that you would conflict with that, but that would be an additional special permit you would have to request. I think that's it on my end. I did want to ask about, previously, we've had conversations with applicants in this zone, in this hamlet, about the possibility of sidewalks. We've looked at developing sidewalks around Gasland and we're, we're curious about having that conversation with you. With the berm setback, it looks like there would be space for that. I, I think at the moment, it wouldn't lead or connect to anything, but the, the premise behind this is that as people come in for use changes and, and side plans, that we, you know, we patch it together and we have a system of sidewalks in the hamlet. So we'd, we'd be curious about that.
As far as the sidewalks, would that be an easement that would be set aside for future installation as projects come online or would have to be constructed now, just so I can inform the applicant?
I mean, that would be part of the conversation. I think Gasland developed it as part of the conditions of the resolution.
Yeah, it's part of their, part of their site plan approval, yeah. I mean, we have the app here, we can discuss that tonight. As far as the parking goes, we were just trying to do the least intrusive method.
Yeah, the least development. I, I totally understand.
Yeah, so we, we do have area on the site that we could move away from that valet aspect. I wouldn't want to get into a traffic study for something this small, but there is avenues alongside the, the barn that we could relocate parking spaces if, if that's the preference of the board.
Well, I think we, I think we start with your parking, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, finish what you're saying.
I was going to say, I think we start with the parking calculation as I described. We see what that number would be. We see how close you are to that number, what deviation from that number would look like feasibly. And I think that at the very least, the board, you know, to even begin considering a valet scheme would want to see a comparison plan of what a non-valet parking scheme would look like in comparison. Does that, does that sound amenable? Okay.
All right, anybody on the board here have any questions, you'd like us, for the applicant?
Did we discuss the variance?
Yeah, you just mentioned, you just mentioned that to them, yeah.
And you can apply, you can go to the ZVA while this is concurrent, while this is going on. This board would not be able to grant any approval until you got that variance, but I just wanted to let you know and so you could get that process started.
So, as far as the calculations, everything, we're, we're considering this a place of assembly, right?
Yeah.
What is sidewalk, uh?
Yes, it's, any, any areas of assembly, that was the, the one per, one parking space per hundred square foot. That's what we're, discussion was earlier. Did mention the, Malcolm did mention a sidewalk and the variance.
So we take the square footage on, on the ground floor, because the upstairs is offices, right?
Yeah, and it would be any areas on the ground floor that you're sort of designating as your public assembly. It wouldn't include bathrooms and closets and depending on the use of the reception area, it might not include that. But on those plans, if you can, you know, make sure they're to scale, show what areas you're using and show what that square footage is, and then use that square footage on the site plan as, as part of your parking calculations.
Do they need any, anything in the parking calculation for the office space upstairs, be it employees or volunteers that would be using that space in addition to upstairs?
Jim, what do you think?
With the offices?
I don't know that we got into office space with the Italian center, but they may not have had any. I don't recall off the top of my head.
I don't recall them having one.
Yeah.
And this is showing a couple of offices upstairs.
This is four offices upstairs, right?
Yes.
And caretaker parking, correct?
Yeah, we talked about that. That's going to need to be, that's two spaces and ideally, whether or not they want to pursue valet parking, ideally, that needs to be separate. That should be its own parking, unimpeded by a valet stacked parking, anything.
So, I mean, it looks like it's kind of subsumed within the parking calculation because the, the place of assembly, parking calculation says place of worship, theater, auditorium, athletic or other place of assembly. So all of those other, you know, a place of worship, a theater, an athletic, I mean, they typically have offices.
Some kind of administrative space.
So there's some sort of administrative space, but it's not, it's not added here. So, you know, for example, the next section down hospitals, one for each, one for each three patient beds and one for each employee including, you know, so.
I'd be, I'd be curious to hear what, what Barbara would say, but my interpretation of it would be that unless they were renting those offices out to a different use, it would all be considered part of the same use and therefore the same parking calculation.
Long as it's accessory to the, to the use.
Yeah, as long as it's still all part of that same organization.
Right.
You know, if it was, if they were renting the upstairs out to a lawyer's office or something like that, that would be tacked on, but that, as part of this use, it would be part of that hundred for, but one per hundred square feet.
Yep. All right. And you?
That was all we had.
I think it's the only thing, just the one last thing that you mentioned, did we pick up on the, on the farm animals?
Yeah, I did mention it there at the end. I did want to remind you before we, we closed, just that you're going to need, it's, it's 24055, and so on the next submission, just, you'd be applying for essentially two special permits there.
So they need two from the ZVA, correct?
No, they need just one.
No, just one, one variance for minimum lot size. If they were in a recreational district, they would need the same variance for that separate special permit, but because they're in a commercial district, they're applying for the commercial farm special permit, and for whatever reason, that doesn't have a minimum lot size, which feels odd because.
Commercial farm.
I, I, I guess it's presumed that if you're applying for a commercial farm special permit, you've got the space.
Right, that you're going to have a large acreage.
They're worried about people having chickens in their backyards and it not being the right size, but here we're in a situation where essentially that is the case, but because they're applying for a commercial farm special permit, there is no size requirement.
So if they come back with a special use permit for animals, can you put a condition that there can be no roosters? So I have peace going down the road?
Right.
Because roosters create.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's what creates the.
Well, yeah, because we do have residents across the street.
Yeah.
And, and behind them.
And next door, yeah.
And I think the rooster part could be very annoying.
Okay.
Roosters get a bad rap.
All right. Okay, um, all right, does anybody else have any questions, any concerns? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, has any comments or concerns regarding this application? Okay, come on up, please step up to the podium, take, name and address for the record.
Yes. Thank you. Ron Evangelista, Route 9D, Houstonville. I'm a neighbor of this property. Thank you. I just have a few questions to pose to the board. The Red Cottage apartment was originally built as a two-bedroom cottage. It's also listed on Zillow as a two-bedroom cottage. I believe the information that you have at this point indicates it's a one-bedroom. I'm hoping perhaps that, my question is, can the town verify two-bedroom, one-bedroom? The proposed split rail fence, the planning board members had discussed this at the October 17th meeting, I was at that meeting as well. There was mention of chicken wire, which makes sense to me, both for the children and for the chickens. I'm asking for the engineer to clarify the detail in the note. The note just mentions split rail fence, the detail mentions split rail fence and welded wire fencing. So I'm just asking that they be clarified. One mentions something, the other doesn't. You've answered my third question already. I was asking, going to ask about designated parking for the apartment. That's been addressed directly, thank you. Also, planning board members discussed at the October 17th meeting, the possible need for refuse enclosure. I would think, just judging from the site plan, that there may be member events which may generate garbage refuse, so just maybe something to consider for the future. When there was, when this initially started and a staff member was residing there and the other folks were still residing in the Red Cottage, there were five garbage cans out front at that point in time, the, the standard large type, not dumpsters, but there were five cans out there at that point in time. So just some thought there. It was mentioned disgustly, briefly, I'm sorry, at the October 17th meeting. The main building floor plan, this is my question five, spaces are noted as member program enrichens, enrichment spaces, member program enrichment spaces, and there's also spaces noted as member spaces. I'm not sure what that means, to be honest with you, and I was hoping that could be clarified as to what exactly that means. And also mentioned, my last question, also mentioned at the October 17th meeting, and I'm not sure honestly if it was the planner or whether it was a zoning officer mentioned it, but there was some discussion about a written narrative as well as the floor plan. I just think some of the board's discussion again at the October meeting mentioned if there were future changes onsite, they would be, these, these folks, the applicant, would be asked to come back and they would address them at that point in time. I just think with the floor plan and a written narrative as to what will go on on the site would be helpful for the future, for any future uses, would be helpful for this board and for the public and for the applicant if it was more, described more as to what will go on onsite. Those are my questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience has any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none? All right, what's the, Mr. Bird, what's the board's intentions with this application at this point?
I would like to see somebody's address, that gentleman was just talking about, like the written narrative with some real detail in it. And, um, refuge enclosure, clarifying the, the lower spaces, which would probably fall into the written narrative. Clarification of fencing, there's two.
Two different.
About things going on there. Any other things that we asked for in addition to that, so I'd rather them that we adjourn the public hearing.
Okay, so we still need, so we need more additional information at this point.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, everybody feels the same way?
I agree.
Okay, all right.
February 6th meeting, we probably give enough time to get it together.
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, we're limited with the number of meetings we have due to the end of the year and the deadline requirements to meet the, to meet another meeting, well, actually, there's only one more meeting left for this year. So, at this point, we're really looking at, I mean, how long is it going to take to get a detailed report, you know, to get more details on this project? With everything that was discussed tonight, you know, the public comment, questions, the stuff that we discussed with the planner tonight, everything else, I mean, you know, I don't want to, you know, have the application come back again incomplete either and kind of short, you know, try to short cycle it again. We're going to put it off. I mean, we're, we're going to adjourn it, and I think we should adjourn it to a reasonable date to give you enough time to compile the information completely. Because it's, you know, since our, you know, the board, you know, has discussed it, we don't want to put things back on the agenda without them being completed. If things come in and then they don't come in complete, the board has the intention of pulling things from the agenda a few days before because it's just, it's counterproductive to have you come in and, and talk to us about things that we already talked about at a previous meeting. So I'm, you know, inclined to, you know, looking at like a, a meeting date of later that, you know, towards.
Or maybe who then to go in front of is zoning first.
Well, he still has to apply to the ZVA, so, I mean, I think we're, I mean, to be honest, I mean, I think we're looking closer like February the 6th to push this back and that'll give you a chance to make application to the ZVA.
You know, the board can't make the move anyway until they have action from the ZVA to begin with, correct?
Right, I mean, we can refer you at this point to the ZVA. Because you do need the one variance regardless, so, you know, and I can, you know, and the board can vote on that right now. Does the board wish to, to have the applicant go to the ZVA for the, for the lot size issue for fraternal use? So I want to make a motion to refer the applicant to the ZVA at this time.
So move.
Okay, motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? See, and on the motion carries. So that, that gives you your denial to get to the, to the ZVA. So that will start, you could start that process. And then, like I said, I think that we're looking, you know, again, February 6th, okay? And I make sure that you get the detail into the plans and everything else. And if there are any questions that come up in between now and then, you know, I make strong recommendation that you reach out to, you know, to one of the professionals if, if there's something that needs to be done, but that way we can kind of get this thing 100% for the next meeting. All right?
I guess one question, talking about parking in the, was, was there any discussion
with DOT regarding the valet parking scheme? Because my only, my only question is stacking out to Route 9D, you know, if you had any kind of issue where people were waiting to pull in. So, I mean, how would they?
Stacking onto the, onto the road while they're.
Well, yeah, because they actually have valet parking there. You can only have two or three cars in line before you back out on the street.
Right. Yeah, I think it's just more detail to put into the plan for the valet parking and how that's going to work.
Yeah, even if you show, like a stack.
With, with, without putting, without putting vehicles on, on the state highway.
Right.
I know what you're saying.
Right. Because I'm just, I'm looking at the site plan now and.
Yeah. All right, so a motion to adjourn the public hearing to February the 6th.
So move.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, all right. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and lot line consolidation for Mid Hudson Islamic Association. All right, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Roadie, Slick, and Andrews located in Poughkeepsie. I'm here on behalf of the Mid Hudson Islamic Association. I will be candid, we were kindly provided with copies of your resolution in advance of the meeting. We have no issues with either one, and I believe my client would be in a position to sign them if, if you were inclined to grant one. I don't know whether you need a refresher, but I think it's relatively straightforward.
Yeah, I think that we're just to the point now where we can vote on the resolution, unless, any of the board members has any questions regarding this application?
No.
Okay, so seeing none. We have two resolutions in front of us this evening. The first resolution is for lot line consolidation. So entertain a motion to approve the lot line consolidation.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so the second resolution we have is, okay, is the resolution of site plan, yeah, site development plan approval. If nobody has any questions regarding this, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made, seconded by?
Seconded.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion carries. So you are all set.
Thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving, Paul, and I appreciate all your efforts. This was rather pleasant, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, have a good evening. Okay. All right. Let's see. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Canine Clippers Incorporated All right, good evening. So you've received the resolution?
Yes.
We were also kind of informed that you're possibly looking to do something a little different with this application?
Hoping, hoping so, yes.
So, um, so with that discussion a little earlier, we got, you know, part of from the, you know, from Ms. Roberti earlier. So, wanna kind of explain your thought of what you're looking to do to the board?
Okay. So, when all this began, I was a little bit of a panic, okay? I just wasn't thinking about everything completely. And in discussion with my husband, you know, we just discussed having the dogs in the house and whatnot, and we thought it would be a much better option.
Just the microphone, just hold the microphone up, do you?
Okay.
Okay, good, yeah, just so, yeah, so they could hear you.
Sure. So we thought it would be a much better option to build, you know, some kind of a structure, whether it be a garage, or, you know, they have really, really nice sheds now. And I think that would be a lot better, because on my driveway set, they can just pull right in, quick and easy exchange, and right out.
Mic up.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Did you hear that last part?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. All right. So, I mean, we did have a little discussion, and I don't know if any of the board members have any questions regarding the possibility of changing this?
No.
Everybody's?
No.
No, no questions, so good.
All right. So, I mean, I mean, if this is one of the options, again, I refer to the professional staff, but I believe as our earlier discussion, the way the zoning code is written, we could kinda modify this, this resolution to allow this actual use to either be within the home or within an accessory structure on the property, correct?
They're both permitted as home occupation, yeah.
Okay. All right, and it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the resolution, other than we're just changing it to add that?
Yeah. I would amend the resolution language, and, and the only thing that I would recommend, this is the way that you'd like to move forward right now. My only concern is that the process might be longer than anticipated, it could throw up roadblocks with, you know, the health department or things like that. So, with, you know, with the board's permission, what I would do is I would amend the resolution to approve this home occupation either in your home or in the shed. And then as you move forward in the process, if you decide at some point that the shed route is becoming too costly or too lengthy, that you could, you wouldn't need to come back here, you could do it in the house, or you could do it in the shed, and that's what the resolution would approve.
Great.
Okay. So, so you'd be fine with that, so the either or, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just for the record, this will all be regulated through building permits?
Yes.
Okay.
You'd still need?
You're gonna need building permits if you get a shed, you're gonna need building permits regardless of where you're at.
Right, right.
Plumbing and electric regardless of whether to use a bedroom or the shed.
Correct.
That's where we regulate it.
Okay.
Okay. So with, with all that said, um...
The, the place that I buy the shed from, the place that I buy the shed from, it's okay if they fill out the application, okay?
Yeah. All right. So with all that's being said, and we amend this to reflect the either or for the home or the accessory structure, entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, so you're, at this point, you're all set, so, you know, you need to make your choice of whichever direction you wanna go, but it, you don't have to come back to the planning board. You just have to figure out which direction you wanna go and work that out with the building department. Okay?
I, I just, I think the applicant, the bigger issue is, if you're adding a shed?
Yeah.
You may need more health department approval, so that, you know, you, I would think you need a sans 34?
Is that in the?
Would you need a sans 34 for this?
It's not in here. Oh, it's not in here, I thought it was in there, sorry.
Okay, well...
It's not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Red room.
Yeah.
We approve garages instead of with slops things.
Right, without...
We don't make them go to the...
Yeah, no. The sans, so the sans 34, with the health department, usually that only applies to like bedrooms.
Right.
You know, you increase the size, I mean, it's an accessory use to that, to the house, I mean...
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so it may not as big, be as big a deal.
It's based upon, right, usually that's all based upon the, the, uh...
Bedroom count, yeah.
Yeah, the bedroom count, that's all, and they're working with?
Yeah.
The applicant's engineer to, you know, to work out whether or not to work, so I don't think it's, it's really an issue then at this point.
Okay.
Other than the fact that, you know, the hair trap and everything else, that you still wanna kinda capture whatever you can, not, you know, fill your septic system up with, you know, with a lot of dog hair.
Okay.
Okay. All right, but I think that's what the building department's gonna require you to do anyway. All right, so that takes care of that. So at this point, yeah, so you're all set.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, you made it.
Okay. All right, so the next item we have on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Cooper Road, conversion of existing residential structure to multifamily
Hello?
All right. Name, name and?
What's up?
Your name and your firm?
Amy Bomberduri with Dan Secosa.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So the last time this was in front of you, there's been a couple changes. The driveway has been widened and the grade has been reduced to meet the multiple-family driveway requirements. The intersections have been added to Cooper Road at the driveway and the driveway going off into the adjacent parcel. The well's been tested, there was an eight-hour flow test, and it was a four-hour stabilized rate of 2.5 gallons per minute, which is substandard. However, today I just submitted to the health department a plan showing 880 gallons of storage, which is a day, it's an average daily flow, that'll be stored and that'll be drawn on as water usage is required, and then it will be refilled on demand once it gets down to 600 gallons. The well on 131 Cooper Road was not impacted, there was no measurable impact on it during the flow test. Again, it was an eight-hour flow test and we had a four-hour stabilized rate.
Okay. All right. Did you get, did you get the letter from the engineer today?
I did.
You did, okay.
Yeah. So the retaining wall is only for the replacement septic system area, that's when it would be installed.
Okay.
It is over four feet, so I, we can show, you know, if you wanna see a facade of it, I don't, do we have to design it right now?
No, I don't think you need a full design, just, just a, like a standard detail.
Basic.
Because if you ever had to use that system, you're not coming back before the board, so they just wanna have something.
Some more of a visual?
Yeah.
Okay.
To have something incorporated for the final set prior to?
Right.
Prior to being signed.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll add that to the plan before the final submission.
Okay.
For circulation. Fire department approval, do I have to reach out to them, or is that something that's?
No, I think that...
Did you get something from fire department?
I haven't seen anything from them.
I don't think they've met, that's the, that was the issue, I don't think they met in, um, you know, in November, I think that was election day.
I can send it out, send it.
Just see if there's anything else. Do you have, yeah, just that?
Yeah.
So the driveway length is less than 500 feet, is that correct? Or is it over, is it, they had asked for, okay, this goes back to July, July 12th, so their, their question was if the driveway is near, if the driveway is over 500 feet, per zoning code must provide a pull-off area for apparatus.
It's 494 feet.
It's how much?
494.
494 feet, okay.
So there, but there is, there's a turnaround at the top.
Yeah, you did, right, I did see that.
Yeah, so...
It did show the, the, the area for it to back into.
And I did a truck turn showing that it works for...
Okay.
Actually, the fire code should control over the zoning code.
The which?
New York State Fire Code.
I think it is the fire code, the 500 feet.
I mean, I think it's the same on both, but?
Yeah.
I mean, the reference technically, you know, the fire code, fire access road provisions Trump or code.
There's also, there's also the turnaround for the other driveway too, which could be as an emergency situation.
For the?
Where the driveway comes off.
Oh, for the adjacent driveway?
Right.
For the other lot?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Let's try that and pull up.
And then the other comment was just if the firewall extends to the roof, if, um, firewall extends through, through roof in common areas, chapter 13, performance compliant method to be used if not installing sprinkler system.
Right, and, yeah, the architectures are showing firewalls that going full depths, full height.
Go full height, all the way up to the roof deck, okay. All right.
And another thing, the DEC notes have been added to the plan. We don't think there's a potential for turtles, but there's gonna be educational materials included, I'll have it posted with the building permit.
Okay.
Did you hear back from DEC?
Yeah, I did, I think I, it was a while ago.
Yeah, my, my question was more about what the delay time was like, because I'm trying to keep track of how backlog they are, and I was curious how long after your first?
I'll look into it tomorrow for you.
Yeah, just let me know, I'm just curious.
I think it was pretty quick.
It's come up with other projects that they've reached out and not heard back for several months, and so I was curious.
I don't think it was that long, because I've, I've only been doing this since the beginning of the summer.
Well, then the other guys have no excuse.
Right. I'm connected though.
That must be it.
Okay. Yeah, do you have other stuff you had, Malcolm, other than, uh?
No, we asked them to provide formal descriptions for the easements that are required, grading easement and shared driveway easement. Asked them to clarify their limited disturbance calc. They, you know, we got copies of the correspondence with the health department, so we're well aware they're, they're getting along with them, they're getting through that process. Talked about the retaining wall, and we asked them to just add site distance measurements for the driveway.
Okay. All right.
Um, I, I, you didn't get a memo from me, I did not know that it was on the agenda this evening. Just taking a look at my outstanding issues, you've taken care of the DEC, that's great, the lighting plan looks good. My only concern is that the luminary schedule at the top has a color temperature for the freestanding lamps at 2,700. It doesn't mention one for the wall sconces, and then at the bottom, there's ordering information that mentions that one of your lights is gonna be at 4K. Just double-check that, it shouldn't be above 3K, and so if you can find sconces that, I think the sconces are available in both, but if not, if you can find sconces that are gonna bring it down to 3K or make sure that you order the ones, yeah, I think it's the sconces that are in 4K.
Okay.
So if you can find an alternative, um...
I'm sure they have the 3K, it's probably just a...
It's probably just an ordering information area, yeah. Um, I think that's it for me. The building entrances look good, the circulate, the pedestrian circulation plan all looks good. And I had a pretty minimal letter to begin with, so, I, mine were minor items and it looks like Amy's, um, taken care of them. I'll, I'll double-check.
It's just?
More formally, yeah, I'll go through it again, but while we're here, just wanted to take a quick look at it.
It's just more putting the notes, putting notes on the plans and?
Yeah.
That type of stuff for the final drawing. Okay. All right.
Do, do you want me to issue a, a formal memo in response to these plans, or do you wanna just?
I'm fine with just an email or some, you know?
Okay, it's, it's up to the board, I can issue a memo or I can write an email and copy you.
You can send a email, just to follow up on those items.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That kinda water thing?
Mm-hmm.
So that won't pull enough water, correct?
There's a minimum requirement, the health department has a requirement of five gallons a minute, and we don't meet that, so one way to alleviate that situation is to provide storage. That's a typical practice the health department would recommend. So we'll have a, a day of storage on hand. Once it gets down to a level of 600 gallons, a float will kick on and trigger the well pump to fill the storage tank again.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe you guys know more about that than me?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, um, what, what she's saying is correct, if, if you can't meet the, the five gallon per minute minimum, this is what the health department makes you do to ensure that there's at least a day's storage.
Yeah, because that was one of the main issues people had, was the water supply.
Yeah, I think they're...
So if that thing goes into replenish the tank mode?
Right, that's a large drawdown.
What's that gonna do?
It, it's not really a large drawdown, and, and when they did their, their pump test, they monitored the well on the adjacent property and there was no impacts to it, so...
They weren't filling an 800 gallon tank with it.
But it's gonna be pumping at the same?
Right.
Rate that they tested at.
So when they, when they test that, they'll pump at the max, which is three and a half gallons per minute or whatever, how long do they do that test for?
The test was a 12-hour test.
It's 12 hours?
Four hours stabilized at two and a half gallons a minute for four hours.
Yeah.
And then the recovery, I think, was an hour. That means that it took an hour to get back to where it was at the static level.
Typically, you would start your pumping rate at somewhere near 10 gallons a minute, and then, um, adjust it down as you see the, the levels, like if the, if the recovery's not keeping up, that's, that's how they get down to the stabilized rate of two and a half.
So that's, I mean, it's more, more of a Department of Health approval than anything. Okay.
It's pretty close. They haven't quite?
What's everybody's, uh...
Sprinklers?
We're not sprinkling because we're gonna have the firewall going all the way up.
They waived the public hearing originally, so we waived that at an earlier meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So what's everybody's, uh, survey's feeling this application? And they seem to have met the requirements.
I still got an issue with multifamily dwellings there, you know. Uh, yeah, I agree. That doesn't really even, like, jive with the comprehensive plan. You know, taking single-family, you know, stuffs on for, you know, the single-family homes and you start general multi-family units in there. I mean, we're already, what, 60/40 for multifamily stuff in the town?
What do you mean?
Like 60% single-family, 40% multifamily, right? Yeah, it's a rat.
This is a provision in your code though, to allow conversion to a multifamily. So it is, it's out of the rate.
But, you know, like I said, I mean, whether...
Hold up mic, hold, pull the mic, pull the mic down.
Are you...
Yeah, you can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, like I said, whether or not it conforms to the comprehensive plan, you know, put in multifamily, you know, of, aside from, you know, the zoning and whatnot.
Yeah.
You know? Again, this is a... I just think that's something we gotta look at. When we vote, right?
I mean, this is a...
It would be an issue with the town board.
This isn't a, this isn't allowed use though.
Yeah, I, I mean, I...
By special use.
I certainly, I certainly agree with that
Correct.
that point, but unfortunately, that would be, the, the compliance with the code, with the comprehensive plan would be an issue for the town board and the legislative issue to, to amend or remove this section of the code
For future.
for future applications. In this situation, um, it is, it is a special permit. It is allowed within the code and they have complied with the conditions of the special permit.
Okay. There. So, and then staff feels that this application is, uh, is basically pretty complete at this point?
Yeah, I mean...
Enough to go forward for a resolution of approval?
I think so. Depending on, my final issues could easily be, uh, conditions in that resolution, or we can take care of it before then and remove those conditions entirely. Um, I don't know about John, but I'm...
Well, they're in the, they're in the, the Health Department review process, but that's typically a condition of approval anyway.
Right, that's a condition anyway regardless.
And a lot of these other
Yeah.
are pretty straightforward
Yeah.
items, so...
I'd like to see what I'll take care of. Are there limits on the number of inhabitants?
Yes. Or the number of, of dwelling units. Um, it's, it's one per 20,000 square feet of lot area, I think, under this special permit?
I think, yeah, I think we could have six, but, six, six dwelling units, but that would, that wouldn't fit with the septic system and the well and it...
So you're going with four?
So we're going with four.
Yeah.
Four two-bedrooms, that keeps us under 1,000 gallons a day. So it eliminates the DEC permitting.
In, in answer to your question though, I don't think there's a limit on the number of occupants, just on the number of units. There's nothing to control.
Well, being water, uh, water's an issue, I would think that that would be...
Yeah, there's just nothing in the special permit that controls the number of bedrooms, right?
The number of people who can occupy a structure is regulated by the New York State Property Maintenance Code.
But, let's be honest, there's no way to...
Yeah, I mean, without getting, you know, you have to get a search warrant to go in.
Yeah.
Yeah. There is a limit, but it's only on the number of dwelling units, not on bedrooms or occupants or anything like that.
No way for us to want that.
Right. And the zoning code had in there a minimum size for each dwelling unit as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so we're at four units.
Four units.
Four units. Each is two bedrooms?
Correct.
So...
Their market rate also, so they're, you know, they're gonna be probably over two grand a month.
Mm-hmm.
If that matters.
So, at this point, open it up. What was everybody's feeling with this one? Staff said they've met the, they've pretty much met the requirement at this point. Do we have the planner draft the resolution? What else are we waiting on as far as this project? I think it's just the, the notes, just having them to add notes to the plan, the final plan set. Now, why do we vote on a special use permit? Do you wanna do that, make a motion?
No, I say why do we?
Why do we?
Yeah.
Because it's part of, the, part of the zoning code. The zoning code says in order for them to do this, they have to apply for a special use permit.
Right, but if they meet everything, you just...
They've meet the requirement, they meet the requirements for the special use permit.
That's, that's what the vote certifies. So, resolution of approval will have a listing of the special permit conditions, and the vote of the board is that the applicant has satisfied the conditions for the special use permit and therefore is entitled to receive the special use permit.
There's nothing else in there that like says the, how many of these things we could give out, 'cause we've been getting hammered with these things, it seems like. Well, she said we could change it after, well, not...
No, I, I don't understand what...
I think I know.
I know, could, go ahead.
To have it standard and not, the house has to, I think it has to be built before 1963. It has to be at least 3,000 square feet. The lot, maybe 20,000 square feet for each apartment that they're proposing in the house. So there are conditions, so there are not a lot of homes that would meet this. They either don't have enough land, you know. So we've had a few, but not many. I mean, I think the last one we did was on 19, probably 12 years ago, and they only got two apartments. They wanted a third, but didn't want a sprinkler, and so...
Was it Wendy's, did, was Wendy's, was Wendy Smart's house under this?
No, the front house pre-existed zoning, the three-family, and she wanted it just built her forever home in the back. A single-family home.
Oh, that's right, that was just...
So, in the future, only the town board could remove this code or make it more restrictive. But this particular code has not been used in years. It's not a frequent...
What about fitting into the comprehensive plan?
Well, that code's been in your code before the latest comprehensive plan, 2000. This is not a new code, this has been there a long time.
Yeah.
It's probably created to preserve historic structures um, while making them economically viable.
Yeah, but that's not a historic structure.
It was built in 1920.
It's built before 1963, it was a great two.
Yeah.
We consider it.
And just like the one that you're all thinking about in Yousenville, that was, I think, a single-family home, then it was a business, I think a Fraser's business. But they came in to add multiple apartments, and it met this as well, because it was built, you know, it was an old home. Uh, and I don't even thi, I think we changed the code because of the Smarts, where they had to have 20,000 square feet for each apartment. I think before that particular case came up, they didn't even have to meet a lot size, so we added that to make it a little more restrictive.
This also was not a single-family home. It was a, like, an assisted living facility.
Right, but we're going one building, built before 63, in a residential town. So this would be, the town board would have to change the code going forward.
Right, so the use, the use change doesn't mean anything?
The special use...
It's permitted by the code.
It's permitted by the code as the code is written today.
I mean, as the code is written, if you have a large, I mean, and it's the intent, it's for a large residential structure. So, you know, and it's fairly large.
What determines large?
The code.
I mean, what does it say large?
It has to be at least 3,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So, so there's a list, and so we've had other people come in, 'cause the house is so big and they bought it, and said, can I make it to family? 'Cause there's just the two of us now, the kids are gone, but the house was built in 1970, or it's 2,800 square feet. So you actually have to be a lot of different criteria to be able to give it a flying given, which is so happens to us.
And to Marco's point, there's no maximization of that 60/40 rule of, of something like this? Like, people could come to us with these types of applications, although rare.
That's a hard number, 'cause a lot of what we look at as apartments, and I don't have that number, are, are owned. They're not apart, they're apartments in the sense of there's multiple residents, but they're not rentals, in a sense. There's very few complexes in the town that are rental. Most of them are owner-occupied.
No, not yet.
Yeah, like condos. And some people own them and some let them, I mean, that happens, but, um, okay. I don't know what the actual numbers, we'd have to maybe go to the county to see if they have an actual number. Do you guys have any of your, um, the actual numbers of apartments versus, you know, homes in the town?
Probably look at homestead, the non-homestead.
Well, I mean, the prob, so under our zoning code, condominiums and townhouses are considered to be multifamily housing. It, it doesn't have to be, it can be owner-occupied and not subject to rent, and it's considered to be a multifamily house, um, multifamily dwelling under our code.
Do you know what numbers are percentage-wise that they're asking as in 60/40?
Of, of renter to owner-occupied? I could find that out for you. I could take a look. There's a couple ideas that I have of how I would find that out. I don't have the number, but I can have it for you at the next meeting.
Just multifamily, 'cause now, which means it doesn't matter if they're owner or renter.
I'm just saying multifamily, uh...
Just any common...
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on the question you're asking. Are you asking renter versus owner-occupied? Are you talking about apartment-style housing, whether or not it's rented or owned? That's...
I think we're talking about multi, right? Multi, I really, irrespective...
Just multifamily.
Single-family as opposed to multifamily.
Yeah.
I mean, under our co, so for example, Woodhill Greens, you know, is multi, is considered to be multifamily, 'cause it's a condominium. Um, White Gates is a condominium, so...
Well, like I said, that's where you have the zoning stuff to, you know, the zoning rules in the first place, is that...
Well, we don't, we don't regulate.
It's not end up like, you know, village law.
There's some question as, I mean...
Right. Because the, the whole condominium thing is, is, is almost, you know, that's a whole different animal, in my opinion. It's, you know, itself, uh, they might have an HOA, but, you know, they definitely are groundskeepers and, and they're kept neat for the most part, so, I mean, I don't know if we could really compare it to that.
So, so there's a general rule in zoning that case law, um, that zoning regulates the property, not the owner. So most zoning, um, you know, the courts have said that it's impermissible to apply conditions based on the owner of a property. So if ownership changes, um, you know, the property remains the same. So zoning conditions should be irrespective of, of the, of the property. And then with respect to multifamily housing, there's other issues at play regarding, um, what's called the fair share of the housing burden for the area, based on the Berenson case in the Federal Fair Housing Act. So, as a general rule, a municipality can't set a cap on the difference between owner-occupied and rental properties.
Well, I'm not looking at owner of that, I'm looking at multifamily, and there is no multifamily in that area, right?
Well, there's, the trailer park would be considered multifamily, wouldn't it?
Trailer park is considered multifamily housing, yes.
Maybe, because it's no trailer park, but there's no multifamily dwellings there, like this one, that we're looking at.
No, but you have, the Cooper Road trailer park is very close, and you have the Bertrick trailer park kind of behind it.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't allow trailer parks anymore though, right?
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Yep.
We have, we have five or six.
Yeah, you have to allow that.
Yeah, they're required by law.
Yeah, federal, federal law prohibits you from, from zoning that out.
Uh, just as a side note, the Dutch County Department of Planning does a good breakdown every year of owner...
Yeah, they came in, we, we had a presentation with the town board, um, and they do, they break it, break it down by both region and town.
Yeah.
It's very useful.
At a point where it's time, you know, it's other, we, you know, it's either gonna be approved or, you know, or not. So, there's really nothing else left to be submitted to us for approval here, so... Somebody wants to make a motion? Yeah, the, you know, motion to, you know, approve or deny the project.
Well, I think it's make a motion for the planner to prepare a resolution of approval.
Right, well, technically that's, yeah.
Right.
So, somebody wants to make, uh, make a motion for, have the planner draft a resolution of approval? No?
No.
I just have to go back. Did we have a public hearing and it was closed?
Yes.
And when was it closed?
Um, and then, um, um, September 17th.
So we're close to 62 days, right?
So, are you alluding to that if they don't motion it, you can follow it legally?
I'm not, I'm just, I'm just asking the question, I mean...
I know, but I want them to know what that question means.
So that, right, that is what that question means. If, I mean, if there's no motion tonight to go ahead and draft, then we would have to give a waiver.
Or...
Or move ahead legally?
I just...
That's the op, yeah, those are the options.
But I want them to know what that was about.
I mean, we've met all of the conditions. There's really no reason not to approve this.
No, no, I understand. Trust me, I do. Um, so it's up to you, up to you guys. You wanna put this off to another meeting?
So what was the public hearing date?
You wanna, you wanna go in executive session, discuss this with legal counsel?
Hey, let's go talk about it.
Um, huh?
Let's go talk about it.
You wanna go talk about, so you wanna, okay, so somebody make a motion, go to executive session to discuss, to meet with legal counsel?
Session to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, it's attorney-client session.
Attorney-client session. All right. So, motions made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
I agree.
Okay. So go to an executive session. Go down, use the, yeah, you can use the conference room. Thank you.